Say, "Leave it off."
Leave it off.
Mike, is this you?
Yeah, that's...
All right, yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. I had to go to all the three numbers, it just wasn't connecting me.
All right.
Can you still hear me?
Yeah, we're still... I'm gonna mute you now, but we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, this is the 2020 East Peoria zoning board of appeals meeting for May. And so, before we get started and call roll, I just want to give everybody an understanding of the process for the meeting. Fair enough. So, the process will largely follow what we typically do in a meeting, but it's gonna be a little different because we're having not only board members, but petitioners, as well as our audience participants, all participating remotely. So, the format is this, the chairman will read each case, and as he reads the case, he's gonna ask for the petitioner to come up and present their proposal. The board is then gonna ask questions of the proposer, and from there, the board chairman is gonna ask if anybody would like to speak. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties with the hand-raising function, so we're gonna have to figure out how that works, and make sure that people get an opportunity to weigh in if they have a comment, testimony to provide on any particular case. We're gonna go through that process for each of the cases, and then the zoning board is gonna have deliberations, where they're gonna make decisions upon each of the cases for recommending to the city council. And then, at the end of the meeting, there will be an opportunity for public comment. My colleague Glenn Wettero is going to allow people to weigh in. He's gonna acknowledge them when the board chairman asks for any public comment. So with that, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. We'll start with roll call, Jim Weber. Not sure we've got his audio working. Jim, we might have to have you call in, Gina Driscoll.
Here.
Ed Zoski. Dino Ori.
Here.
Mike McCarthy. Belinda Young.
Here.
Mike Kelly.
Here.
We have a quorum, we'll try Jim Weber again, Jim Weber.
Here.
There we go. All right, we have a full complement of our zoning board this evening. Mr. Chairman, please feel free to go ahead and go with the first item.
Okay, do we want to approve the minutes from the February 10th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Kelly would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the February 10th meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. Did you get my second, Ty?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Jim Weber. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Aye.
My audio's on and off, Ty.
Okay, understood, we go ahead, we're ready for the first case.
Okay. So, the first case, case 20-a-9, petition of the City of East Peoria to amend the city code section 5-2, 10-2, to permit the limited processing and freezing of fish within the enclosed building as a special use in M1 Manufacturing District Limited. Everybody get that?
We got it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good, whoever's wanting to speak for this, is he remote, or is he there at the building?
Actually, this item is mine, and then the next item will be Mr. Source, and he is present. Oh, I'm sorry, the second item after that is gonna be the Mr. Source.
Yep, that's right. Okay. So, where are we going on that one, Ty?
Okay, so, for this item, this is a pretty specific item. It's something that we've been working on for a staff level, probably for the last 10 years, and it's to do with Asian carp. We have some, stars are aligning, so to speak, right now with this. We have the DNR, who has decided that they wanna focus on opportunities to present an economic development case for this fish. You know, it's something that's here, it's an invasive species, but it also has some good ramifications for the economy and, you know, putting some people to work. So, the IDNR is participating in a program that is assisting fishermen to make it worthwhile to harvest the fish. We have a great opportunity with a local business owner, Mr. Source. He has a property that is probably better suited for this operation than anything we've ever looked at. It's got the ability to bring the harvested fish in, process them minimally. We're not talking about a facility that is doing any sort of cooking or processing in that respect, but it's minimal processing, freezing, getting them shipped out to other sources. He's got the capacity to be able to process them, but this is a little more general than that, even though we've got a very specific case this evening to talk about, that we think that there's opportunities potentially for other operations like this. We're not at the point where we're doing any sort of human consumption, but this does open the door, at least in the M1 zoning, to permit an operation of minimal processing for the fish, and hopefully get something going yet this year. So with that, did entertain any questions from the board about the item? Have you had any?
I do not.
No questions.
I have no questions, I feel like it's a great solution.
Mike Kelly has no questions.
Jim Weber has no questions.
Okay. We wanna see if there's anybody, I don't know if you can tell online if there's anyone that is, wishes to speak, or...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you want to have a motion to approve this item?
Yes.
From the other deliberations, or not?
No, we can make a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the change in the addition of the case 2089, petition of the City of Peoria to add to the state code section 510-2. I would make a motion to approve that. Go into council.
I can second that, Belinda Young.
Okay, Mike Kelly, motion, Belinda Young, seconded. Since this is not a special use or a variance, we'll just do this by voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. All right. Motion carries, thank you.
Ready?
All right, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for our second case.
Okay. Case 20-SU-10, petition of Ola Afalabi of G Inspired Auto Mall for a special use to allow for the display, storage of vehicles on properly-located property located at 270 South Main Street, pin number 010132406021. And is Ola with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ola, tell us what you wanna do there.
Yeah, so, I'm representing G Inspired. So, the inventory that we have now is kind of expanding. So, we talked to the city, and we are trying to get some overflows on the square that I have on the presentation. So if you look at those two squares, the places that we propose to park the overflows that we have for our inventory. And the square in blue, those are the current inventory that we have. So if we have any vehicles coming in that we don't have any space for, in those blue squares, they will go to the overflow on the other side of the building, which is approximately 45 feet by 30 feet. And that will take about nine cars, maximum. And the second one is 53 feet by 15 feet, which will take about nine cars, maximum.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Ola?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Kelly does.
Go ahead.
Ola, I went to your facility and looked at it, and with the drawing, the paperwork that you submitted back in March, I reviewed your plan layout where you proposed overflow one, and I counted 12 cars in there today. And then, you have proposed overflow two with nine cars. Now, there was some cars over there, but I couldn't tell for sure if those were some of your cars or customer cars that were parked there. I didn't look to see honestly if they had the yellow car dealership tags on those cars, as you did the other ones. What I did notice was that in the area of your current inventory, one and two, with your dark layout drawings and your handicap parking in front of your office, that I counted the two cars in the parking spaces and one car in the handicap parking. And then, on the side of the building, it shows two cars in our drawing, but there was actually four cars parked there. And then, there was another five cars parked along the side of the lot facing, or parallel with the road. And then, I saw seven more cars parked in underneath the building, underneath the roof, to the right of your office, at the end of all those white offices, but connected with the lumberyard, prior to where the fence is. Now, I'm assuming that is part of some of your overflow, too. So is the intent to park those cars in that, under the roof area, seven cars there, and also the intent to park five more cars along the road, parallel to the road, in addition to the others? Because I did see that you had 12 cars parked in the proposed overflow. You had one in front of the other.
Yes, so I talked to the landlord before I made the proposal, and he told me I can park seven cars, all that he linked to, which is shared, and I can park five cars, as long as it's not obstructing any business relationships with the other tenants. So that was an agreement with my landlord.
Okay. So, with that said, and with what I saw today with the cars that you had on your physical lot and everything, what do you propose in terms of the maximum cars that you would have there? Because in your proposed overflow one, you got 12, and I count two overflow two, and that's nine. So that's a total of 21 cars. And then, there were seven underneath that roof, so there's 28 cars. And then, there was five parallel along the road, so that's 33 cars. And then, I counted four alongside your office, that's 37. And then, the two in front of your office, that's 39. And then, there's one for the handicap, which I'm assuming that's for customer parking.
Yes.
Is that a fairly assessment of the use of that facility at this point in time?
Yes, so, this is going to be temporary. I talked to, when I was talking to Ty and Glenn, I talked to them, and I said, "This is gonna be a temporary situation, because I'm working on moving right now to a different location, which is gonna be bigger." But I can see these for, just going on for about less than, I'll say, two or three months. That will be the max. Now, if I go back to the proposed overflow one, right now, I have about 10 to 12 cars there. And if I go to proposed overflow two, I have no cars. Now, the reason I am proposing the overflow two is because if we have any overflow, if we have any customer that wants to pack, or if they have additional customer or technician that wants to come in to assess their vehicles, they can park there. But I'm not proposing overflow two to have cars there.
Okay, so that's gonna be used more for customer parking, if need be, in the proposed overflow two area, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, with the, your testimony that you're looking for a larger site, then I can go along with what you're trying to do for the time being to get it by. But I, you know, if it gets to be where you've got 60 or 70 cars there, then you're running out of room real quick.
Right.
So, okay, all right, thank you for answering my questions, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else got any questions?
Mike McCarthy, I have no questions.
Jim Weber has no questions.
Belinda Young, no questions.
Ed Zoski, no questions.
Gina Driscoll, no questions.
And Dino doesn't have any questions either.
Ty, can you tell if anybody else wants to speak for or against?
Let's see, Glenn?
I am not seeing anyone popping up or anything, so I don't see, no, there's no opposition.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on to the next one. Next case is case 20-SU-11, petition of Roy Source, of Source Enterprises, for special use to allow for the limited processing and freezing of fish within an enclosed building on property located at 3201 North Main Street, pin number 010123100018. Mr. Source, are you with us?
Yes, I am, this is Roy Source.
Good night, Roy.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm here again asking for another special use permit. And as Ty explained very thoroughly, I'm seeking your support to use part of my facility to process Asian carp. Since I originally put my application in back in March, we've progressed significantly on this matter. And I'm here to answer any questions for anyone that may have them, and what the process is going to be, and what we envision. Any questions?
Mr. Kelly, you got anything?
Yes, I do, a couple. Mr. Source, I'm assuming that this, your fish processing part is gonna be within your building, as well as what we had proved a few months back with the fact of your growing of marijuana. And so, I'm assuming this is a separate, a different wall section away from the marijuana part. How large an area is the fish processing part gonna take up of your building? And is it gonna be towards the back also?
Yes, so as far as the space needed to utilize what the fishermen are gonna be doing, it will be in the back part of the building, adjacent to or near where we're putting our cannabis, but it will not be touching, it will be walls separating, and different entrances and everything. So we're looking to make this a completely separate entity that the, what we're calling the Fish, let's see, the Midwest Fish Co-op, who is newly formed through the state, will be utilized to bring their fish in, and then we will ship it out for them to a fish processing location that will then call head and gut those fish, and we'll bring them back, and we will then store them to be shipped out for different uses. Bait is one option, there is a human consumption option there also. We're currently working on securing end-users for this product, but we're very close to having that done.
Okay. And is that also, does this part of the fish operation, I'm assuming include the use of a large cooler? Is that something you already have in place now? Or is that something you have to establish also, as far as keeping the fish cold?
No, we have existing space that we'd have designated for the Asian carp or the Midwest Fish Co-op program, both cooler space and freezer space.
Okay. And then, are you processing some of the fish in terms of? If so, are you cleaning them? What are you gonna do with like the guts and the skeletons and all that? How are you handling that part of the process?
As I said, we're receiving the whole... Sure, as I said, we're receiving the whole fish from the fishermen. We are then gonna put those fish in large totes, as they do at fish processing centers. We are then shipping those whole fish out on ice to a fish processing, a couple different locations that we've identified that currently do this work. They're actually adding employees in their towns to accommodate that. They will be the ones doing the heading and gutting of those fish. And then, we will take those, we'll call it finished product, that will be utilized for either bait or human consumption. And we will also then take the, they call it the awful part, which is the head and guts, and drop those off at another fish processing location that does fertilizer for fish meal. So we're utilizing all the parts of the Asian carp that are abundant in the river and throughout the state of Illinois, in many states, to maximize the usage of those fish. And eliminate as many as we can, reduce the numbers.
That sounds good. And I hope that it definitely helps reduce the numbers. So does that mean that fishermen out on the Illinois River, then, will be able to bring a boat up to the back of your facility? If you have to create a dock or something, because I know you back up to the river, and be able to then bring the Asian carp right into your building at that point, or not?
Yes, they're gonna back up into our garage, which we currently have drains there. The state is also in the process of looking at, with the help of East Peoria, putting together a ice machine program so these fishermen can also utilize the ice off of our property, which we're going to install for them.
Okay. Okay, best of luck to you, I hope it works out very well. This is a very, very good program to help deal with the invasive fish program, that's for sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and it would not be possible without the help of Ty and the City of East Peoria, because they put a lot of effort into this also. It was a collaborative effort on everyone's part to make this happen, including the states, so...
Well, I think you're doing it the right way, and that's good.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Jim Weber has no questions. Belinda? Ed Zoski?
Ed Zoski has no questions.
Gina?
Gina Driscoll has no questions.
Dino?
Dino is good also, all for the project.
Okay.
Belinda, you have no questions.
Okay. Ty or Glenn, can you tell if anybody else wants to talk?
Again, I don't see any other participants asking to join the meeting at this time, so I don't see anyone that would wanna voice their opinion.
Okay. So, on to the next one. You ready, Ty?
Yes, we're ready.
Case 20-SU-12, petition of Mitch LaHood for special use to allow for the outdoor storage of dumpsters on property located at 2901 North Main Street, pin number 010123100010. Okay. Mr. LaHood? Does he have a question? Here we go.
Yeah, so, we proposed a little horseshoe of dumpster roll-offs to kind of prevent the amount of dirt coming onto the road. But, yeah, we just temporarily park our dumpsters there until we need to haul it somewhere in East Peoria or Washington, or this side of the river.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. LaHood, what is the, how many are you planning on parking on the site? And from the drawing that was submitted to us, it looks like they're back towards the back of the building, is that correct?
Yeah, so right now, they're on CA6, which is kind of like a road mix. But you still get some dirt on there, and we're gonna try to limit that by, I don't know if you have the proposal in front of you, but we proposed a horseshoe so that it would limit the amount of dirt coming onto the road. But, yeah, we typically use it for in between eight and 15 dumpsters, but we proposed 20 dumpsters in total, I think.
Okay, that's what I was looking at with the horseshoe, and then it showed like three back, farther back, as far as an overhead view of the trees and everything.
Yep.
So are those, because I see like four visual from an overhead view of the picture, the back of the building, and then in your horseshoe, you've got eight, nine on the outside, on the biggest radius of horseshoe, and then you've got two, three, four, five, six, seven, it looks like, seven on the other. And then, three towards the back, so 20 is what you're saying total, then? And still doing it in a horseshoe, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Okay. The trailer that's sitting out in front there that has been alongside the fence for quite a while, is that going to remain as far as some type of blocking, as far as blocking the view from the highway? Is that trailer going to remain there or is that intended on moving or do you know?
The what that's in the way?
The semi-trailer that's parked parallel with the fence.
Yeah. That's not our trailer. I couldn't tell you for sure whether it's going to stay or not. That's, that's a different company than All-Star Dumpsters.
So you're, you're just basically renting space in the back of the lot behind the building, just the space that you're going to utilize, is that correct?
Yeah. It's unused by either company. We just store, just, it's basically just storage right there.
Okay. Well, one of the, one of the things I think as far as a recommendation that I would make to the board and so that you know is that I believe that the front of the fence along there, the semi-trailer, if it stays there, that's fine. But the, when I looked at this several months ago, there's five parking spaces from the building out to the edge of the gate. Is to put a ribbon or some type of mesh fencing on the fence for that section plus the gate so that from the road, which I know is higher than the level down in that yard, but at least it will help cut down on part of the view of the dumpsters setting back there, is my point. Okay?
Okay.
So that's something that I would, as far as in my recommendation that I would make to the board in terms of recommendation to approve this, that that be set. I mean, one of the situations is that there is a, where most of those dumpsters set are supposed to be on hard surface, but if you're just utilizing it, I don't know that I want, want to impose more bothersome to you or expense to say that that all has to be hard surface, so.
We, we thought about putting in a hard surface, but the problem is being so close to the river, we're in a flood zone, so.
I know, I know.
It'd be a waste of time to.
Yes, that's, and that's another part of it. That's why I'm not really suggesting that. As long as you got it set on the CA6, that's at least a harder compacted base. So, and, and I would, as long as it's 20, 20 dumpsters, I would go along with this then, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, one question. Dumpsters are always empty stored, right? There's no full dumpsters being stored on site?
We have stored a full dumpster, but it's usually tarped. It's just when the landfills are shut down or when the transfer station is shut down and we can't get anywhere. But, yeah, it has happened.
Okay. I was not able to go by the site and see the difference in elevation on the road, but I'd be opposed to asking you to provide screening, because it's ineffective if the road is that high. That's my only comment.
Thank you.
Jim Weber has no questions.
I have no questions also.
Ed?
Ed has no questions.
Gina?
No questions, thank you.
Belinda?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ty? Glenn, you see anything?
I am not seeing anything with this case either. No one's trying to join at this time, so I don't feel that there's anyone trying to speak on this matter.
Okay. All right, Ty, are we done the, the 19 next? Petition city, the recent?
Actually, this, the case number is 20-SU-13. So the, the previous case was, was 19. So the updated one is SU. The petitioner is requesting additional vehicles and trailers to be stored on site.
So that's the one we're using, 20-SU-13?
That's correct.
Okay. So petition of Glenn Bob Thomas to amend a special use to allow the outdoor display and storage of vehicles, trailers, and property located at 1109 East Washington Street. Is that the one?
Correct.
Okay. And is Mr. Thomas with us?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so tell us what you want to do now.
Okay, so the original request, I believe, was for 10 vehicles, for 10 U-Haul vehicles to be there on our property. And I really didn't have any idea how many we would be having there. As it turns out, we have more like 20 U-Haul vehicles there at any given time, give or take. So I'd be requesting that we have a special use permit for 20 U-Haul vehicles.
Mr. Kelly?
That 20 vehicles, Mr. Thomas, would consist of both trucks and trailers, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. And I, what I've done is, what I've requested from my manager is that we, because we were just getting overloaded, and I know, I didn't want any, any U-Haul vehicles in front, directly in front of the building at all. So, so we've, we've managed to pretty much stick to from the, if we're looking at our building, the right-hand corner of the building, angling over to the right side of the entrance, keeping all U-Haul vehicles in that area. I just think it looks better. There's the occasional, when we'll pull one out for a customer and have that in the lot or if we know a customer's coming in, I know they've done that. But essentially, they're all over in the right-hand corner of the property.
Okay, well, currently, I mean, as of today, when I went by there again, and I looked at this off and on several different times.
Yeah.
There was, there was two trucks facing the road up to your side. And then behind that, parked with the back towards the side street and facing towards your building was a truck and then a flatbed trailer, and then another truck, and then a small trailer, and a larger trailer, and then a trailer on the angle right in the corner of the fence, and then, and then three more around on the backside, and then a trailer in front of those that was behind a truck that was parked alongside the motor home. The motor home is right alongside the building, so I counted a total of 13 there. And if you indicated that you're not going to try to put any in front of your building, I'm wondering how you're going to get 20, up to 20 in there, because with the trailers and the trucks that I counted, and there wasn't really much maneuver room, because there was also that long white trailer that I think is yours or whomever belongs to the business behind you or Big Daddy Cab.
Yes.
Business there. Now, I could see putting two more trucks in there, or maybe 15, but that would be the number of vehicles that I could see could maximize fit in that area that you just talked about.
I think the times that it might be up to 20 would be when we have maybe an excessive amount of trailers, which are a lot smaller. And we have had, I know I've counted, I know I've counted 20 there from time to time, and it was in that area I spoke of, like we talked about. Now, that, maybe one of those trucks may have been in the spot where that, that RV is, that belongs to Will Thomas. He had, he's had one there most of the time. There was a spell where he didn't have one and it wasn't parked there, but so it could be 19, could be 20. I wanted to say 20 because I just, I didn't want to be over on occasion when we had a lot of trailers, essentially.
Okay, all right, I understand that. The other thing that I think, and we talked about this once before, when you came to us back a few months ago for the tin, for the special use for the tin trailers and everything, we talked about extending that fence another 20 feet out towards the road to help kind of block off the view of the vehicles on that side street coming off of Subway there.
Yes.
And believe that that still needs to be done in order to make that a little bit more aesthetic right there on that corner, as opposed to just looking at all those trucks and trailers right there where there's people come up off that side street.
Yes, yeah, I think toward the end of, of the season last year, I was kind of wavering on a fence or some, some type of bushes, and then it just, they got cold and there wasn't really opportunity. Most recently, I did, I think I'm under, I'm under the understanding that the, the people that own the house kind of on the corner, I know that this, that, she had mentioned that they, they had maybe bought that corner property from the state. Does anybody know anything about that?
I'm not able to confirm that, Bob. I'm not sure that's happened yet.
Okay. But, but regardless, yeah, I want to do fence or shrubbery or something in there now that the weather's better. I, what I would like to do is talk to her. I have spoke to her because we, there was an incident with a part of the fence there that may, may have been damaged, and I told her to tell me what we needed to do and fix it. But I didn't hear back from her, but she, at that time, had mentioned that, something about that corner property. Because when I did inquire, like, for example, with Will Thomas, he said that that had come up previously. And even when they put the fencing that was, that is there now, he had received a letter from the state asking about why they were putting a fence on their property. But, but.
The state property or, or the ladies' property?
Sorry, the state, yeah, he got a letter from the state, that corner belonged to the state, from what I understood.
The corner lot is owned by the state, Mike, and we've asked about it. We've inquired about the fence recently, and they've indicated they're accepting of it. So I'm not sure why a letter was received about that, but, yeah, the neighbor adjacent to it routinely encroaches on the property and has indicated the same issue to us, and we've not been able to confirm that there's been any property transfer that's happened.
Okay. Yeah, if I could have a, I could check with her as early as tomorrow and perhaps work out an agreeable plan to put a petition, extend that, I think isn't a bad idea, and get that done, let's see, you know, within the next 30 days.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
No questions.
Dino?
Yes, I have questions. There were six cars parked along the street, and there's a sign there that says East Peoria Repair or something. Are you, are you running another business there also?
That is the, let's see, any signage that's there is the signage that was there when I, when I, when I started leasing the building. Essentially, Big Daddy Cab doesn't need signage, it's not really that kind of a business. And U-Haul, I mean, all the U-Hauls are assigned themselves, so if someone needs a U-Haul, they know that we, we deal with U-Hauls there. So any signage that's there was just there when I, when I took over leasing the property.
Okay, then what are the six cars out front for?
They'd be parking for our drivers primarily, or U-Haul customers.
The cars don't move, they were there most of the time?
I mean, they would be there, there are going to be cars there all the time, because we, we run 12-hour shifts, and so like the day shift drivers are going to be there during the day, and night shift drivers are going to be there during the night. So there would, I would expect there to be cars there all the time.
Okay, our original agreement previously was that there was 10 vehicles, including the employees and the vehicles that were going to be worked on. So that would be included in the 20, is that right?
The 20 is for, the 20 is the U-Haul. I don't, I'm not, I don't know exactly what the original plan was, but the 20 is what I'm requesting.
The original was 10 total, I believe, 10 total vehicles?
Um, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I can't confirm that, I'm not sure, I don't have it in front of me. I think that would, I don't think I would do that because, probably can't be right, because I, I mean, we would, we would always have for, you know, probably eight, I would say about eight or nine vehicles, maybe even 10, for drivers or dispatcher, and then there can be an occasional, you know, there could be someone parked and go and take a U-Haul with them. So there could be up to like 10 vehicles there at any given time.
Sounds like an awful lot for that little, small lot. Thank you.
Ted? Glenn, you got anything?
No, I don't have anything, man. Thank you.
Gina?
Over the last several months, I have been by there quite frequently, just because it's down the street from where I live, and I have counted close to 20 U-Haul vehicles there. You're right, a lot of them are trailers, and so they are smaller. But I kind of agree with Dino that 20 total seems more acceptable than 20 U-Haul plus an additional nine to 10 or whatever additional cars. I think that means, that means the fence is, to me, a must.
Sure. No, that's fine. I have no problem with that at all.
No problem with the fence or with the 20 total?
Oh, sorry, I have no problem with the fence. I mean, I do think that we're, I mean, we, we have, I mean, we have, like I said, 10, 10 vehicles, be it drivers or, I mean, myself, someone that's picked up a U-Haul, left their vehicle there, those types of things. Now, Will Thomas has been very generous in that if there's, if we, we're tight on our, our space, that we, you know, we can park a vehicle over there occasionally, whether it be a, you know, a manager or a driver or a dispatcher. But, yeah, I, just when you, when I look at the property, I mean, I know that we want a number, and I get that, for, for U-Hauls, I feel like it's, I never, I mean, everyone knows, I don't want, I don't want any U-Hauls in front of the building, I just think that starts to look too, too much there, for sure. But we do need, if we didn't have, I mean, well, we do need eight to 10 parking places. I don't know how many we have there that are, we did the, the striping for parking places. I want to say we have places for eight vehicles, and that doesn't count anything in front of the garage doors, because we're not, we're not repairing, we're not taking in business to do repairs. That's just for our own little things that we do in there. So, yeah, eight, eight to 10 cars. But I'd like up to 20 units of U-Haul, just in case we get an abundance of trailers.
Okay.
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for point of clarification, then, when we get into deliberations, I want to make sure, so we are talking about up to 20, a maximum of 20 vehicles being the U-Haul vehicles, be it truck or trailer combinations, as far as number of trailers and number of trucks amounting to 20. But then we still have to deal with, if I'm following everything correctly, that we still have to deal with where we're putting eight or nine cars that belong to drivers, dispatcher, manager, customer, whatever the case may be. And I don't know that that has totally been answered, because I'm looking at a drawing that was submitted in our packet, and I think you, mostly you have those, that shows parking spaces on the side of the building with the garage in the back, and that parking bases on the side of the building is currently being taken up by a motor home, which is almost the length of the side of the building. the front, because there are overhead doors that the, what I'm going to call the east side of the front of the building, overhead doors, um, for two different garage doors and then the entryway door going in the office. So there's one handicap parking space and one, uh, parking space additional right at the very end of the front of the building. Uh, and then we, the layout shows that there are three, four, uh, seven, seven parking spaces along the street side by the sidewalk. So is, is the intent to have the drivers and, um, uh, other officials park along the sidewalk in front of the building in those parking spaces, which would be seven?
So the, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mike. Uh, so you're saying there's seven, and I could, I couldn't recall. There's seven parking places, um, designated in that drawing for the, in the, and up by the street?
Yes, sir. In front of the street. This would be, uh, if you're going to drive, drive into your entrance way and you would be coming off of Washington Street and you turn left thereby your sign, your, uh, your U-Haul sign, and if there's two trucks parked by your sign, you have an entrance way there. And there's like, um, designated, it's marked out on the paper, shows, um, one, two, three, four, five, six parking spaces. There says customer parking and that's along with the cars facing out towards the sidewalk and facing out towards Washington Street. And then on the side of the building, it shows, uh, parking spaces drawn on an angle for four parking spaces. But what I'm indicating is, is that that area currently is being taken up by that large motor home, parallel parked alongside the building and one U-Haul truck. So there's no parking spaces at all there for any employees. So I see six parking spaces plus you have a, a handicap parking space, which is required. And then you have one other parking space right in the front of the building. And that's all I see available.
Okay, yeah. So there would be, there would be seven plus a handicap.
That is correct.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think that that would almost always, um, accommodate us at this point. Um, if I, if I come up, which I'm not there a lot, but if I pull up, I would, I typically will park in front of the, the garage, one of the garage doors because we're, we're really not like in and out like you, like a garage would be. Um, but, or I would park to the left of the, uh, to the left of the parking place that is to the left of the, the handicap spot. Um, a lot of times Will Smith, Will, Will Thomas, excuse me, is parked there, uh, and I'll, you know, accommodate him of course. Um, so I, I think that most of the time seven is, is enough. We have, we typically have, uh, I mean, we're only running six cabs right now, uh, and so, and we'll typically, not all of our drivers will drive in, they'll get picked up by another driver. So, um, I, I think that seven is okay. We may have a car, you know, manager, my manager may park in front of the garage door, but other than that, um, I think we would be, we'd be fine. If we could, even if we can be allowed eight vehicles there, I think we're probably okay.
Well, if, if that, if that's the way it works out, I mean, one of the other issues that I was going to bring up that we're just throwing monkey wrench into all that parking space up front is that, and I believe that, uh, our previous meeting several months ago, we talked about doing something with some landscaping across the front. And, and of course, there's no real easy way to get some landscaping in there, but if there is, uh, it'd be off the sidewalk and then all that parking spaces would be taken up by landscaping. So, um, and, and I, I haven't looked at the current striping to see if the striping is visible and, and to the point where it shows six or seven parking spaces there. But I think that would be necessary to be at least updated to make sure that cars are parked in the parking spaces supposed to be designated for your drivers.
Yeah.
And it's not really customer parking.
Yeah, yeah. And that was, that was just done, uh, uh, just the end of, well, probably October of last year. Um, so yeah, yeah, it should be very visible.
Okay.
I don't know, just to mention-
Just wanted to make sure, clarify is, as far as what we're voting on, that the twenty and then we're, we're talking about your additional s- seven or eight vehicles, uh, for drivers.
Yes, yeah, that, that's, yeah, that is what I, um, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Glenn, Ty, see anything from, anyone else?
I again, do not see anyone trying to join the meeting at this time. So it does not look like there is any, excuse me, public discussion.
Okay. So, we want to move on to our findings.
We're ready to go.
We're going to do the, uh, Hola Hafa Lobby. That one first, the twenty dash, twenty SU ten.
That's correct.
Is everybody on the same page?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, uh, twenty SU ten, um, this is for the auto mall, the G-inspired auto mall. First question, will the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare? No.
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 Will the pro- proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district? No.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
Are adequate utilities, access roads, drainage or other necessary facilities to be or have been provided?
Yes.
Yes.
Are or have adequate measures to be or have been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Yeah, that's-
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district? Yes.
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 Someone like to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I, uh, Dino has a question.
Mike McCarthy, I'll make a motion to approve. Go ahead, Dino.
Uh, the question to Ty is can we limit this, uh, this special use to like a, a set period of like six months? He, he said that ninety days would take care of it.
I think that's certainly a condition that could be imposed, yes.
We could propose that and just eliminate it to a six-month period or, or another period. All right, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll pass on initiating the motion and let you word that, Dino.
Um, the motion was to approve it on my part, uh, eliminate it to a six-month period. He, he agreed that ninety days would be enough for him, but, uh, I, I could see giving him a, giving him six months to take care of it. And so limit, limit the, uh, special use to a six-month period. Thank you.
I'll second that motion as Dino stated.
Mike McCarthy will second that. Hey, you've got two seconds.
I think, I think Gina beat you to it. I have a motion from Dino.
I'll defer to the lead.
A second from Gina. And this is, uh, special use as proposed, uh, but tend within a six-month period, not to last longer than six months. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Jim Weber?
Yes.
Dino Ori?
Yes.
Ed Zoski?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Melinda Young?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy? All voting in favor.
Tell me when you're ready for the next one, Ty.
I'm, I'm ready for you. Go ahead.
Okay. Next one, twenty SU eleven. That's Roy Source of Source Enterprises. This is for the storage and processing of Fish. Will the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare? No.
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 Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the user or enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
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 Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood? No.
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 Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district? No.
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 Are or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage or, and, or other necessary facilities to be or have been provided?
Yes.
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 Are or have adequate measures to be or have been provided, have been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site minimizing traffic?
It's your time.
Congestion, traffic congestion and hazards on public streets? Yes.
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 Okay, and the last one, will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regu- regulations of the zoning district? Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, Mike Kelly would make, uh, would request to make a motion to, uh, request the special use permit be, uh, approved. Would that go on to counsel?
Someone want to second that?
I will, yeah.
Yeah, I'll-
Mike McCarthy will second.
Ed, we'll get you on the next one.
Yeah, I'll take the next one.
We have a motion by Mike Kelly, a second by Mike McCarthy. Roll call votes. Give my sheet here. Sure I don't forget somebody's name. Jim Weber?
Yes.
Dino Ori?
Yes.
Ed Zoski?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
Melinda Young?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy? Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, ready for the next case?
Okay. Case twenty, twenty SU twelve. This is for, um, Ms. Lavud. And let's see. Will the proposed, I'm sorry. Will the establishment, maintenance and operation of a proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare?
No.
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 Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district? No.
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 Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
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 Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
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 No. Are or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage or other necessary facilities to be or have been provided? Yes.
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 Are or have adequate measures to be or have been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
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 And will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district? Yes.
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 I'll make a motion that we approve.
Yes.
We approve the, uh, special use permit.
Mr. Mayor?
And send it to counsel.
Was that Ed?
Yes.
It was Ed.
I'll second that with a question. Uh, Mike Kelly would second it with a question. Ed, are you indicating that there would be a maximum of, uh, twenty dumpsters on-site?
Uh, yeah, it was proposed.
Correct?
Yeah, that was proposed, yeah, the proposal, yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, the other question I have is, um, the question about, uh, screening the, the front of the fence and the gate and whether, uh, any of the other board members feels that it's necessary. Uh, let me point out that the, the screening mainly would be more importantly for just the service road part because of the fact that the highway itself that is up probably five to six feet higher elevation-wise, um, so from that standpoint, I don't know that, uh, the screening would be that effective.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
So I just point that out as, um, as an issue.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I don't either.
Mike McCarthy doesn't think it's necessary either.
Yeah, Gina agrees with you guys. It's pointless.
I would, I will second that with a maximum of the twenty dumpsters then. I'll discuss on the fence, fence sections as far as the screening.
I have a motion by Zoski, second by Kelly, with one condition of not more than twenty dumpsters at any given time. Ready for roll call?
Yep.
Jim Weber?
Yes.
Dino Ori?
Yes.
Ed Zoski?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy?
Yes.
Melinda Young?
Yes.
All voting in favor. Ready for our last case?
Which one is that, Ty?
It's twenty dash SU dash thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah. I don't have that from the last one.
Oh, I don't have a finding sheet on that, but we can use it.
I don't either.
Okay, so twenty dash SU dash thirteen, that's the petition for the, um, Glenn Thomas to amend the special use permit, outdoor display of storage, uh, vehicles, trailers, U-Haul stuff. Okay. Will the establishment, maintenance and operation of proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health- be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
Yes.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district? No.
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 Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood? No.
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 Will the establishment of proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district? No.
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 Are or have adequate utilities, access, roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or have been provided? Yes.
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 Was that an accidental no? Okay, are or have adequate measures to be or have been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Are we getting some no's?
Yes.
Yes, I believe we did get a no.
Uh-huh.
Couple of times.
30 vehicles would, uh, create a problem traffic-wise, I believe.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations in the zoning district? Yes.
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 Okay, so, based on what we were talking about earlier, it looks like 20, up to 20 U-Hauls and the rest would be, uh, uh, seven spaces for employees or customers or whatever. So looking at 27?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I believe it might be eight, uh, because you have, uh, you have a parking space in front of the building plus a handicap space, so you could consider that two. And the drawing that I'm looking at that was presented to us in our packet made, or presented by Big Daddy Cab, it shows on the front side, uh, a total of parking spaces of actually seven against the sidewalk facing the street. So if you count the handicap, you've got nine total there. That would be the max.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could I, uh, could I ask Ty a question as it's Dino?
Sure.
Um, the original, uh, special use, I believe, he requested two parking spots on the right-hand side of the lot and was going to have a total of 10 vehicles total. Is, is that correct or not?
I, I believe it was 10 vehicles, it was U-Haul vehicles related to the business. I don't know that it included all the other-
The word, what, the wording wasn't total?
I don't believe so. I believe it was the, the vehicles and the trailers that were related to the U-Haul business and-
Because he said he was going to do some repair work at that time, I believe.
Yeah. And I think that was anticipating that would have been in addition to, I, I, to be honest with you, Dino, I haven't looked at the file recently, but I, I know 10 is correct and that was the number that was set, but I don't think that was for the entirety of the lot. I mean, we've had other used vehicle sales on there and I want to say the last gentleman might have had, was it 20 plus an additional, I mean, he had some U-Haul vehicles, but he only had like, you know, two or three of them.
Okay, I believe he indicated that he was only going to have two employees, so now he's wanting 10 employee spots, up to 10?
I know there's some, some in and out with the, the, the cab service, that, you know, he has folks that come in and they pick up their vehicle and they go out.
I have problems with his numbers. Thank you.
Well, someone would need to make a motion. Dino, are you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, based upon our deliberations, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the request for the special use, uh, with a maximum of 20 U-Haul vehicles, trucks and/or trailers in a combination and, and no more than, and a maximum of nine vehicles, uh, for parking, uh, in front of the building. That would be employees, uh, shift change, or, or a customer, or whatever the case may be. And one of those nine has to include the handicap parking space.
I would second that. Belinda Young?
I have a motion from Mike Kelly, second by Belinda Young, and that is to limit not more than 20 U-Haul vehicles slash trailers at a time and not more than nine spaces for employees, uh, one of which will be the handicap space. Um, any thought or condition on the, I, I know, um, Mike Kelly had brought up the landscaping and/or the extension of the privacy fence.
I think the fence was something we agreed on, but also on the U-Haul vehicles, um, there would have to be a mix because if, if all of a sudden there's 20 U-Haul trucks down there, um, that's not going to work. So some of those would have to be trailers. I know the way that's worded is, you know, a combination, but, um, I just, I just want to make sure that we don't end up with no trailers and a whole bunch of trucks there covering a bigger footprint than they're supposed to.
Would, uh, Mr. Chairman, would it be, uh, advisable to, uh, uh, change my motion to, to interject that, uh, it would be a maximum of, say, 10 trucks because as, uh, as I indicated today, I, I, uh, I found five trucks there and seven trailers. And of course, the trucks take up a lot more room than the other, but we could, because we could set a maximum of 10, 10 trucks and 10 trailers, uh, so that if it, up to the count of 20. And in terms of the fence, if there's an issue with part of that being on state property, then I think that's something that, uh, I don't know that we can really address other than the fact that if the city or Ty helps Mr. Thomas check into the fact whether there can even be a fence placed in that area. If it's state property, then maybe it can't.
Mike, I have had a conversation with the, with IDOT regarding extending that fence and, and their indication was they were okay with it. As long as it followed that same alignment, which is basically right along the perimeter of the, the paved parking lot.
Well, if that's the case, then I would add, I would add that to my motion, the fence needs to be added then.
Yeah, Mike McCarthy has a-
Yeah, I do. Before we impose an arbitrary limit on the number of trailers and trucks, can we ask the petitioner what might work for his business in terms of that, those counts?
Yeah, I was going to ask if he's still here. Is he still with us?
Unfortunately, it looks like Mr. Thomas has left the, the meeting.
Well?
I can see, give me a moment, let me see, I don't know if I can invite.
Well, we can, we can pick a number. We can go-
Well, what are, what are some of the, uh, other board members, what are your-
Or, or we can leave, or we can leave it to- I would, I would say, me with the 20 and you can always, uh, push it back to staff to work out some proportion with, uh, Mr. Thomas once we have his input.
Good idea.
But 20 trucks is certainly a concern, that, that all trucks is a problem, he's going to have less than, you know, some amount that's, that's less than 20 of all, of the trucks.
Mr. Chairman, there, there's usually at least 10, 10, uh, trailers there most of the time that I've been by there, so, uh, I, I'd be for the 10 and 10.
So Dean, are you suggesting to set the limit of, to 10 trucks, is that correct?
No, you said that 10 trucks and 10 trailers. I'm saying that there's, there's oftentimes a bunch of trailers stacked back there. There're usually 10 trailers back there anyway. So I, I think 10 trucks and 10 trailers would probably work.
That's, that's why I said a combination of. That's why I'm asking, uh, for some input from some of the other board members of what you think.
I think Ty should talk to, talk to him and see if he can adjust it to a certain amount. I don't know that-
What, what we can do is ask Mr. Thomas for a, a mix that he thinks he can work with and we can share that with the zoning board by email, see if that's workable.
I think that's fair, Ty.
Yeah, I agree. I feel like coming down tonight to put a, a maximum on the number of, or a combination of vehicles is arbitrary and it also then puts extra duty back on the city employees to constantly be checking for the number of trailers versus, you know, trucks and that sort of thing. And I don't think that's what we're really trying to do. It just aesthetically, it needs to look decent and if we've all agreed that no matter what the combination is, if Ty can come back to us after a conversation, that's excellent. But I think we also agree that the fence needs to be there as well.
I couldn't say any better.
Okay, so I have a, a motion from Mike Kelly, a second by Belinda Young, and we're going to determine the appropriate mix, uh, between vehicles and, and trucks, or between trucks and trailers. Uh, not more than nine spaces for employees and customers, uh, with one of those being the handicap space and then the privacy fence extension. I, I think staff's recommendation was 25 feet. If you're good with that, we can, we can put that in as well.
Sounds okay to me.
It's okay with me, Ty.
Okay. Roll call. Jim Weber?
Yes.
Dino Ori?
No.
Ed Zoski?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy? Belinda Young?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes deliberations.
Do we have any new or old business?
None from staff.
None from Jim.
Then do we have anybody else on the line?
Uh, not at this time. It is entirely board members, so I am not seeing anyone attempting to get on at all, so I think this would be it.
May motion adjourn.
Your motion is adjourned from Ed Zoski.
Seconded by Mike McCarthy.
Seconded by Mike McCarthy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Uh, Ty, before you sign off, everybody can make a statement.
They won't help you all.
Ty?
Yes.
Can I make one? And Ed sitting up there at the table is a-